Good evening. Welcome to the February 27th meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. We'll quickly go through the agenda. We have continuation of the public area, 165 Flanders, release of the tri-party agreement bond for Ed Waters Way, presentation by the Affordable Housing Trust on the zoning articles, four town meeting. And that's about it. Some miscellaneous stuff at the end, but nothing specific. Pete, I'll give you a second before we jump into it.
I went to the other meeting.
We're gonna try and move this along because there's another meeting in this room at seven o'clock, okay? Alan, why don't we, we have to start with the affordable housing because Alan has a meeting, has to do with the select board meeting, so we're gonna shuffle the order.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was advised to stand here so it gets picked up by the microphone. Thank you for having us.
Namon.
Yep, I'm Alan Edinburgh, 8 Nash Street, Westboro. I'm a member of the select board, a trustee of the Westboro Housing Affordable Trust. I'm actually the select board's representative to the trust. We have sponsored two articles on this year's annual town meeting warrant. I'm gonna start with Article 27. It's a little more sophisticated than Article 21. Article 21 is request to authorize the select board to transfer some property so the trust can explore development opportunities for affordable housing. It's a piece of town-owned property that's been unused since the town acquired it in 1949. Article 27 is our second one. It's a home rule petition. It's effectively, and I'm not gonna read the home rule petition, it's long, but effectively what we're doing is we're asking the select board to petition, the Massachusetts legislator, to exempt the housing trust from certain provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 149, in order to accelerate the potential development and lower the cost of development for projects that may happen at 6 Beach Street and 45 High Street Extension. And I'll go through the purpose beyond that. There's a second section that asks, or that actually clarifies, that the trust, if it's gonna convey the property to any entity that's not controlled by the trust, we'd still have to go through 30B procurement. So let me step back and sort of give some background. When it comes to developing these properties and affordable housing in general, the trust has three options as a real estate investment trust. One, we can manage the project ourselves, do our own direct contracting and building. More commonly these days has been transferring the property to a nonprofit or for-profit developer, usually in response to an RFP process where they build it with an accompanying land development agreement to ensure the affordable housing's built to our specifications. And the third is actually to create a redevelopment corporation, and this was recently done at Acton, where it's an independent private entity corporation that is controlled, majority controlled by the housing trust, that exists for the sole purpose of redevelopment of one or more properties. The reason for options two and three, and particularly option two, if the trust wants to maintain a higher level of control over the property, or to own the property post-development, is that if we take options two or three, the project can be eligible for low-income tax credits. Currently, at the federal level, it's 9%. It's 4% at the state, although current legislation, potentially through the legislature, might increase that to as high as 7%. So the LITC can effectively lower the cost of the project by about 13%. So typically you budget an 11 or 12% savings if you use low-income tax credit as part of the financing package. And so what this article does is exempts any projects we may do at 45 High Street Extension and 6 Beach Street from aspects of Mass General Law, Chapter 149. Specifically, we're simplifying the procurement process as far as what's required for bidding and bid documents, and it generally eliminates the need for what's known or filed subcontractor bids. So not to get into the weeds, but you guys know from watching your municipal building committee and school building committee meetings that the general contractor has to put all the subcontracts out to bid in the same manner as we did use to select a contractor, rather than having a general contractor say, hey, I work with these three electricians all the time, and 99% of my projects I'm gonna use one of them and get pricing. So it forces the general contractor to go through a formal RFP and bid process for every single subcontract, which adds time and expense. Chapter 149B, Chapter 149 includes provisions for prevailing wage and subcontractor preferencing. We are not asking to be exempt from those. So the projects will still have to adhere to prevailing wage and those preference provisions. It also waives Chapter 30B public bid requirements if the trust transfers the property to a trust-controlled entity, or actually if we transfer it to the town or another town entity. We can do that without going out to public bid. That means, for example, we could transfer the property to the housing authority to own and manage going forward if we wanted to, if that's a direction the project takes, without having the housing authority compete with private developers who might want to own and operate the property. So why are we doing this now? It's very early in the process. Our Article 21 will even, will give us the standing to pursue development opportunities at 45 High Street Extension, so we're sort of ahead of the game here. The trust owns 6 Beach Street and has two or three viable concepts for that that we're working, we've taken to the business one stop, we've got feedback, we're updating plans and, you know, to get to a final concept that we can then go after, design work and funding. The reason we want to do this in parallel is there's three things we need to do. We need to do project design, engineering, and permitting, and that's underway, and for 45 High Street, that's contingent down to vote at town meeting. We need to start working on project financing. And so if we pursue the home rule petition in parallel, they can all come together at the right time. If we wait until even, you know, fall town meeting to go after the home rule petition, home rule petitions will take six to 12 months to make it through the legislature. And so by doing it now, we feel that we can avoid any delays waiting for the home rule petition to go through, we can start talking to Mass Housing Finance and others about financing options for the projects, the use of the low-income tax credits as a component of that, we should be able to reduce the overall development time by, on these projects by a year from what they would otherwise be. That's Article 27.
Questions?
It's a detailed procedural thing.
So you would still have to use prevailing wage, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we still have to use prevailing wage, and the general contractor still has to follow subcontracting rules with respect to preferences, set asides, things of that nature.
Is there any way to get around not having to do prevailing wage?
We could, but our research shows that home rule petitions that waive prevailing wage with the other components fail to pass the legislature.
Got it.
That there's a precedent of housing authorities and a few other trusts using this exact same exemption to lower it. The other component is by eliminating and simplifying the procurement process, we qualify to apply for low-income tax credits for the housing development. You do not need to remove the prevailing wage to be a qualifying developer.
Right.
So we're really, our goal here is really to be able to have those low-income tax credit as available as a financing component. I can't tell you today if they'll be part of the financing, if they'll need to be, but if we wait a year, six months or a year to decide that we want that, then we're delayed by the time it takes to get a home rule petition through.
Thank you.
Questions? So specific to those two properties, there's no way to generalize this to future projects as well?
All of the precedents we've seen with the legislature have been for specific properties and projects and not blanket to any agency or entity.
So you expect if you do another project...
If we, if we, it depends on the nature of the project, right?
Right.
LITCs wouldn't have been appropriate for 3 Baylor Avenue, for example. Sort of the nature of the property, the size of the project, things of that nature. If we were, you know, we're working with the housing authority exploring opportunities to expand their presence on Rogers Road, that type of project would be suitable potentially for low-income tax credits we'd be looking for as that. And yes, it's been suggested to our legislative delegation that they simply amend state law to exempt housing authorities and municipal housing trusts from these specific provisions, sort of on a general law basis.
Yeah, that was my next question.
But that's political and down the road, down the road.
What are you looking...
Changing laws takes a lot longer than a home rule petition, I think.
Yes.
Yeah, what are you looking for most? Just a support for those two articles?
Awareness and if you're willing, a vote of support for the two articles, and if, you know, possible for a representative of the board to, if the opportunity arises, to stand up and register your support on the floor of town meeting.
Make a motion to recommend that town meeting pass Article 27?
Second.
As written in the law. Motion on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero. Thanks, Alan. Ed, you're gonna do the next starter?
Yeah.
Wait, whichever. We're going. Did we start at it? All right, so we'll let Alan go to his other meeting.
We're there. Oh, there we are. Okay. All right, next article that we have, or Article 21, yeah, I'm sorry, Ed Bain, 5 Thomas Rice Drive. I'm chair of the Westboro Affordable Housing Trust, and here to talk about Article 21 on the annual town meeting. What we're looking to do is to have the select board transfer property we've identified at 45 High Street Extension. I won't read the specifics, it identifies a specific plot of land. People know about High Street Extension. High Street is the first street right past the Rotary by the Exxon Mobil, that goes up. There's a little undercut under the railroad tracks, and then that, that street is High Street Extension. The particular property we're looking at is very close to the Mayberry apartment complex with that, so. Basically, here it is, to the right is Mayberry, the main road there underneath, to the lower left, is the High Street Extension. And it's, I think it's a .7 acre piece of property. As Alan mentioned, the town took it on, I believe, a tax lien in 1949. Nothing's been done with it since then. It's a completely wooded area. We believe at one point it had been a gravel pit because there's a deep swell in the middle of it, which would of course be needed to be filled if we, you know, proceed with the project. We have two potential concepts that I'm gonna show. There would be about four cottage-style homes. Once again, this is a downtown area. We want to keep the design within the type of housing you would find in a downtown area, particularly small starter type of homes. We would do a shared septic system, given the moratorium on sewer connections now. There are no houses on the property, so there would be no credits that we could take advantage of. There is some wetlands over to the upper left there, which we talked with the Conservation Commission. We can adjust those to, particularly move some things to the north side of the property, and they seem to think that that would not be a problem. It's very, very minor amount of wetlands there. And we would do off-street parking, as you'll see in a minute. So we haven't decided yet whether these units would be owned or rented. We could build them and then turn them over to Westboro Housing Authority as rental units if we feel that's the right way to go, or they could be sold and possibly even do a mini condo, mini HOA type of ownership process. And we would like it to be a combination, it's going for, but, you know, we'd look for young families, not necessarily young families, but families as a starter home, veterans and end or senior housing. Okay, I'm showing concept two, because this is what the one-stop seemed to prefer as far as layout.
This is our preference. The trust.
Oh, right, the trust choice. We have, hopefully you can see that there are four squares, two at the very bottom, one on the sort of right towards the upper side, and then one towards the very back at the northern end of it, with a on-street parking along their High Street Extension at the very bottom. And there would be obviously walkways going into, into the property so people can access their, you know, their appropriate units. There is a septic field over on the left side, which would be the leach field, and that's about it. We think this is, you know, one good concept that we would prefer. Another one, any questions on that while I have it up, or we can come back to it?
Yeah, what's the SW between the first two homes? Right, right here.
That would be the sewer, that would be the sewer, the shared sewer, and then the leach field would be back.
What's the...
That's the leach field.
Yeah, how far are we to the wetlands?
It's not, well, how should I say? I don't have the exact measurement.
It's just outside exclusion zone.
Yeah.
Although that exclusion zone reflects the current wetlands and not the replacement wetlands.
Replacement up at the upper left.
The bottom of the gravel pit is a man-made wetland.
Yeah.
And so the feeling and initial feedback from Conservation at the Business One Stop was, given that it's less than 1,500 square feet, 2,500 square feet, filling in the existing wetlands and doing a restoration that's contiguous with existing wetlands can be acceptable.
Okay.
And actually, it's preferable to have wetlands be contiguous than have separate detached areas.
Okay. So the other concept would be, and this is a little clearer, would be where there's no on-street parking. The parking is right in the middle of the, of the units, of the four units. Units are basically in a similar position as the previous concept, but it would, you know, still allow us to have just, you know, a little bit more, easier access to houses. So, you know, particularly if this was gonna be senior housing, this might be more appropriate since you wouldn't have to walk up, you know, any distance, especially like to the back or the far-right units with that, since you could park right in front of them.
You show the septic field, where is the septic pump and stuff located?
I think on this one, we're just showing in the back right is the leach.
You think everything's there, including the fields?
Yeah.
Okay, going back to the, actually, yeah. I mean, I, I sort of like that better because I'm concerned about the fact that the septic fields in the preceding one are very easy to be walked on or played over, and so setting them off, I think, sort of makes more sense.
Right, yeah. And that was some of the feedback we've received.
Seen from the one, yeah, the one-step. And so also for emergency vehicle, this obviously provides complete turnaround.
Right.
Once again, these are concepts, nothing finalized, but showing you where, where we're going with this and the amount of housing we can try to provide.
So why did you prefer the first concept over the second concept?
I think, I don't know, Alan, you wanna...
Yeah, so the first concept has more green space in the middle.
Space, because it's on the street parking.
Well, it's not on the street, it's off-street.
Off-street parking, but adjacent to the street.
And we know that generally, the town doesn't like having more than 12 perpendicular spaces for parking. We have 10 in two blocks of five, but it's, even though it's a light, a light, very light traffic street, it's, and technically, sort of within the guidelines of past projects, it's not desirable. So the other project had more green space. The back access was a centerized, was a center path that was wide enough, well, it would have to be widened by 6 feet to accommodate the current power. And an ambulance wouldn't be able to turn around, so the ambulance would have to back out.
Alan, if you're trying to, with marketing this, perhaps to, either people with maybe one small toddler or people that are elderly, it's a long walk for them from the street.
Yeah, so...
The thing I could see is being a real drawback.
Yeah, so this is that first concept.
So our, you know, our things, what we like about this was green space. If these were family units, senior units would be up front for closer access parking. This pathway is wide enough for the tower unit, but not the outriders. It would be another 6 feet. And if an ambulance needed to get close to that building, they're either backing up the whole way down, which is doable, but challenging at night and in the winter particularly when things are icy and snowy, and so...
Dragging a toddler back to that...
And dragging a toddler could be an effort as well.
Right.
Not to disparage my own kids from what they have.
Why is it designed this way with that one all the way in the back and the septic there? Why don't you swap them so that you have four near each other and then septic in the back? I don't wanna get into designing the project, but it just seems like...
Well, that's a thought.
Yep.
Even if, even if we did that, there's more fill requirement here because of the grading and the existing.
Okay.
And one of the thoughts was, given that this has to be filled, we could fill it with materials that would guarantee a perk, whereas up there or even in the other one, there would have to be some additional tussle to see if we can build as is, or we'd have to dig down and do a sand fill or something.
If you look at those topographic lines, you can see the degree of slope that we're looking at.
Yeah, I get that.
So these are, these are just concepts?
Right, right.
And...
I would, I would just think, long-term, having the four units kind of together would just be better community-wise than having them farther apart, even if it does take more fill. It's just a better sense of development.
Right, and so some of the concern also is that the parking's in the middle. Here's the 50-foot line to the wetlands. Having another home here doesn't let you be wide enough in the parking area for an ambulance to turn around.
Right, but that's if you're doing the parking area there rather than in the front.
And so the general feedback from the Business One Stop, Jenny, is there's confirms that this design action's preferred because an ambulance can turn around, and you don't have the perpendicular parking. So, you know, we'll...
So then, is there a reason you're focusing on detached? Why not four townhouses?
Well, the concept for detached is to create a single-family feel and cottage-style.
Right, but you've got a ton of townhouses on the very...
Yeah, they're townhouses, they're townhouses back here, but all of the other visible properties and butters are single-family.
Yeah, I look at it.
So having a higher density of small, single-family feels like more of a transition rather than having, as these are laid out right now, these are one-story units on a 40-foot by 30-foot slab, 1,200 square foot each. So these are, we felt this design, the concept, was transitional from having the townhouses which have height in a different feel to the density than here. We don't, we don't think by going townhomes, we'd get higher density. If you built them all on this side, you still have the parking, you still need space for the septic.
So does this have to come in for site plan review?
So we'll ask for determination whether this fits under the senior overlay if all four units were 62-plus or...
No, because it's a five-acre minimum.
Okay, so it wouldn't, it's part of BPOD, so we would be, our intention is, our expectations, this would be friendly 40B. So we would come to the...
ZBA.
Well, we'd go to the ZBA for the comprehensive permit. We would want, if you're willing, to come here first and talk about the project, get your feedback and input and consensus on the direction we're taking, and then go to the ZBA in saying that our plans are amicable and, you know...
Yeah, so I think my attitude is, and I don't wanna speak for everyone, but if you're gonna come back here, we can, we can have our input on the specifics, but I'm comfortable with the idea of transferring the property to the trust because I think it's a good spot for...
And the wording of the article for the transfer includes giving the select board the authority to set any terms and conditions that they want. We are recommending that the select board discuss with us and set a time by which we have a project permitted.
Yeah, we commit to it.
Or the select board would have the right to recall the property. Also, if, while we're going through this process, if the town defines a different municipal purpose for the property, the select board could recall it.
The reason I ask about the hearing, Alan, I just wanna make sure that, and you may have already consulted the butters, but I just wanna make sure that the butters have a chance to...
Oh, yeah.
...land and address either us or ZBA.
We're looking for time to have a community meeting about this potential project and 6 Beach.
And 6 Beach.
To bring in the butters and others, you know, we'll go beyond the 300-foot rule because if we did 300-foot rule, we're excluding like two homes on High Street Extension, so we'll invite them too, to get community input and feedback on the project.
I thought you, you said, talking about families, but then I heard you talk about 62 over age, I mean...
So we're helping fund the housing production plan.
Yeah.
And we'll be looking to that help guide what the mix of the property is.
I'd like to see a mix. I mean, I really, you know, I think one of the things that in this town, if we can do more of, is putting seniors and younger families together because I think to try to do this kind of mix is really what we should be looking for.
Yes, absolutely. And we've also reached out to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Right.
For any data they have on housing needs of veterans in Westboro.
Great.
And we'll, between this and what's potential at 6 Beach Street, we're looking at 10 or 11 total units. We may decide to treat it as one project at two locations, split over two locations as, you know, as far as how we determine the mix.
And we might get a better deal, if you will, from a developer by providing, you know, and also if there's some sort of standard or template kind of housing units that they may be able to provide by building more of them at different, even though it's, you know, they're, it's just not even a mile apart.
Sure.
There may be some benefit in that.
Yeah, you use kind of construction that's, yeah, right.
Okay, so...
One more question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to remember the name of the committee, Land Disposition or...
The Land Use Committee?
It's been in a base, it's sort of sitting there.
Which is, which is part of the reason why when we request the tran, if authorized by town meeting, when we go to the select board to ask for the transfer, we're gonna recommend conditions that give the select board the, you know, rights to, in certain situations, to recall the property. So if we're unable to come up with a viable concept and finance it and get permitting within a certain window of time, then the select board could decide to let us continue or come back, or if the select board finds, identifies a different use for the property that it prefers, or it thinks the town would prefer, they could also recall the property and stop the project. We're not, the transfer really gives us the legal standing to look at financing and to represent the property as we go on for the permit.
And also, there may be some things we might wanna do, some borings, just to make sure we don't get alleged, things like that. But in order, but in order for us to, you know, reasonably expend that money, we would wanna make sure that, yeah, we do have the right to move forward and, you know, continue development there as best we can. And since the town hasn't done anything with the property for, what, almost 75 years?
We are aware that several years ago, there were members of that neighborhood who raised the idea of leveling the property and building a small playground. We checked with the Recreation Director and Department, and that was sort of put aside because of the cost to clear and level the land, the size of property is generally too small for a playground, parking and access, they were concerned about an issue. And so if this point, it's not on the radar of Recreation Commission or Department for use, but again...
Well, I would think four small housing units there would make sense in that neighborhood because it really keeps the character of the neighborhood, and I think that, I'm sure that, I would think the neighborhood would be happy to have something along those lines.
Okay, so, yeah, so as far as we know, there's obviously been, except... So, yeah, so as far as we know, there's obviously been, except for what Alan mentioned about the Rec Department going back some few years.
Free COVID.
It was the only time there was, huh?
In the before times.
In the before times, there wasn't, you know, there really hasn't been any other interest on, you know, the municipal side. And obviously, we know that there's a tremendous need for affordable housing in, in our town for lots of different groups. So anyhow, this, just moving on for time's sake, I know you're trying to get through stuff, but we want to make sure we answer questions. This aligns the housing goals in the master plan, obviously, development in the downtown area, more affordable housing. We may not be able to do that, higher dense, we, we may not be able to take advantage of the senior overlay because of the five, as Mark just pointed out, the five-acre minimum. But it also meets, you know, obviously, the community needs, the senior needs assessment, which was recently completed. I was on that, that committee, and one of the top issues is allowing seniors in particular to age in community, if not in their own homes, at least stay within the community because the friends are here, the church is here, library, all the amenities they're used to are nearby. And this would be along those lines. As Alan mentioned before, the select board can set terms and conditions of the transfer, so if we don't do our part and move along at a reasonable pace, they can always pull back, you know, the property for some other use or just to, to, to hold it again. So that's all we're, you know, basically asking is, you know, gives a shot. We're, you know, been talking, obviously, tonight with you. We did go before the ZBA just, you know, to show them, you know, what we're thinking of doing. And, you know, we're still early on. Conservation Commission's been involved, obviously, because of the wetland issue. And there's no cost to the town in the fact that this is generating no tax revenue today because it's a, you know, municipal property. This would bring in some revenue once everything is completed, so. That's the end of the article 21.
Once, say, if it's approved, how, what would the timeline be? How long do you think it would take for people to be actually living in these homes?
So timeline.
Probably years at least.
Two years would be moving quick, so.
Yeah, we've, we've been moving quick, and as a matter of fact, we had one. Do you want to talk about that today or?
No, we won't, we won't.
We won't go into that. We had a good, good, good.
Because the slowest part of the project will be the financing. And how much the trust subsidizes versus what we deduct from the state and federal government. And we probably wouldn't want to finish plans as to ownership or rental until we have the housing production plan, which we expect July, August.
July. Correct, that's, yeah, we're working in conjunction with Jenny on that.
We have, we have concepts, but we wouldn't finish project design and concept until, until we have that data and can understand the mix and whether these should be rental or ownership units. And then, you know, we'll come here. Our intent is to come here to get your input and consensus on the design work before we even approach the ZBA for the comprehensive permit. You know, but we, we don't want to go before the ZBA with the feeling that the planning board doesn't agree that our plan is good for the town.
Other questions?
Who takes it?
Are you wanting to do a motion to support it or?
Well, I'll be happy to do it. I'll make a motion to recommend that the town meeting pass Article 21 as written in the warrant.
Second.
Well, I was going to say if the planning board supports the motion. And what we're trying.
We recommend the.
Right, but, yeah, we just say, we'd be asking for the planning board's support of the articles.
Okay, so I.
So that's all I would.
That we recommend that town meeting pass the article as written in the warrant with the full support of the planning board. Well, I don't want to say full support because we have to, so with the support of the planning board.
Don Water Council.
Okay. I think we got that. Ready? I got a second from Don. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero.
Great. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it.
Now you have.
Now I can add.
And then, Mark, just to find if we can do Ed Waters Way street acceptance of Zara Drive so I can.
Gentlemen, could you take, gentlemen, excuse me, Ed, Brooke, we have a lot more to do, so if you could take conversations outside. Next item on the agenda is Ed Waters Way, release of tri-party agreement bond and replacing that with a passbook bond. Jenny, I'll ask you to just summarize this. I know your memo was pretty complete on it, but just for the people watching.
Yes, definitely. So Ed Waters Way was part of a subdivision called Reservoir Estates that was approved by the planning board in 2003. And now the project is almost complete. The developer has asked for a reduction in the performance bond from 2018. This was reviewed by the DPW and they recommended that the bond be reduced from 198,000 to So the planning board would be releasing a portion of the performance bond in the amount of 181,625 dollars.
Jenny, why are we holding 16,000? What needs to be, is there anything outstanding?
Yeah, there are a few items that are still outstanding and the developer, represented for the developers here, wants to talk a little bit more detail about it.
I don't need a lot of detail, I just, generally, is it curving?
Yeah, I believe it, I believe there's some curving maybe, but I honestly don't have a lot of detail on it.
I believe there's one curve that has to be adjusted, there's one bond that they want to check. And most of it, believe it or not, has to do with ensuring that the trees that we planted make it through winter and that there's no issues with it.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to.
I didn't hit you guys up, like, I was told to, like, come and keep getting bond reductions, but I figured just leave it there until the end, so that's what I did. That's why it's such a big discrepancy now of reducing it down instead of bothering you guys all the time on it. Yeah, it's pretty simple.
Any other questions?
No.
So we have two separate motions on this?
Yes, this is just for the performance bond reduction.
Does somebody want?
I move that the planning board approve the request for a partial release of the performance security for Westboro Reservoir Estates, also known as Ed Waters Way, in the amount of 181,625 dollars. Further, the planning board agrees the remaining amount of 16,375 dollars may be replaced with a passbook bond.
Second.
I have one question about this motion, Tom. Is Westboro Reservoir Estates, is the only part of it Ed Waters Way or is there another street involved?
Just Ed Waters Way.
Thank you. Clarifies it for me. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Do you want to do Zara Gardens next?
I, I can just give a brief summary if you want me to or.
Yeah, please.
Okay. So the select board already had a meeting on this on January 9th to move to intend to lay out Ed Waters Way as a public way so that it would be on the town meeting warrant for March 23rd. So part of that, as you all know, is that it has to go through the planning board and the planning board must make a recommendation to lay out Ed Waters Way as a public way. And then as soon as you vote on that recommendation, I can send it to the select board, who has a meeting in 20 minutes. And they will then be making their recommendation at the town meeting.
I move the planning board vote to recommend the layout of Ed Waters Way as a public way as shown on the plan entitled Street Acceptance Plan of Land, Reservoir Estates, Ed Waters Way in Westboro, Massachusetts, owned by Westboro Reservoir Estates LLC, dated September 10th, 2023, revised through December 20th, 2023, and prepared by Gurrier and Helenon Incorporated. This recommendation is being made pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Sections 81G and 81I.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Do you want to do Zara Gardens next?
Yes, I have to send that one over to the select board as well. So Zara Drive is also looking for a street acceptance, the same thing. The select board moved to intend the layout of Zara Drive at their meeting on January 9th as a public way. And the planning board must make a recommendation to lay out Zara Drive as a public way. However, we did receive recent comments from the DPW Engineering Office that stated that they do not recommend acceptance of Zara Drive as a public way at this time due to some missing items for that acceptance. So the DPW Engineering Office is proposing to remove the article from the town meeting warrant.
I read the letter from, I saw the letter from DPW and I agree with them fully and I think it should be in the warrant.
I'm going to follow the recommendation of DPW. So if that's the case, do we recommend not approving it as a public way or do we just stay silent?
I think, wouldn't we recommend they withdraw that, that warrant article?
You would be recommending to not, I mean, you can stay silent, it's not, it's required the planning board to submit a recommendation, but there's a time lapse. If you don't make a recommendation by a certain time, then you're basically silent on it. Or you can vote to not recommend. However, when you make the motion, just make sure it's in the positive so you're voting to recommend, make a motion to recommend, but then you don't have to vote for it. And I apologize, I messed up the motion in my mouth.
Once it's referred to us, we have 45 days to report back or else we just, you know, they just act without our.
I'd like to get it to the board so.
Yeah, I, I'm ready. I move that the planning board vote to recommend the layout of Zara Drive as a public way as shown on the plan entitled Subdivision Asville Roadway Asville Plan, owned by AA Farouk Ansari, dated February 23rd, 2024, prepared by WDA Design Group. This recommendation is being made pursuant to MGL Chapter 41, Sections 81G and 81I.
You, you said Zara Drive, right?
I did.
I just know it was written wrong. Okay, got it. We have a motion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? So all those in favor of accepting or recommend, all those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? Okay, that's five to zero opposed. You could report that. Next item, we have a release of the tri-party agreement bond and, partial release of the tri-party agreement bond, is that right?
Yes, yeah.
For, for the same project?
It is for the same project, yes. Or, no, this is not for the same project, this is for the same developer.
Oh, my mistake, same developer, different project, sorry.
And I was doing a little too much copying and pasting for the description of the request, so ignore that. But the second paragraph is correct. So the project is almost complete, or phase one at least, and the developer has requested a reduction in the performance bond from November of 2022. The DPW and Engineering Department has reviewed the request and they have agreed that the bond can be reduced from 313,127 dollars and 75 cents to 151,022 dollars and 73 cents. So you'd be voting to release a portion in the amount of 162,105 dollars and two cents.
Any comments?
That's fine, we agreed on that.
Okay.
I move that the planning board approve the request for a partial release of the performance security for Village, for one Gleason Street in the amount of 162,105 dollars and two cents.
Could I just amend that to say leaving the amount, leaving an amount of 151,022 dollars and 73 cents, just so it's clear what's left in the account?
Yeah. It's your motion.
I accept that.
We have a motion.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero in favor. Thank you for coming in. Next item on the agenda is 165 Flanders Road. Thank you for waiting. That's, that's you guys, right?
No, Fisher.
Oh, you're Fisher.
No, 165 planners.
Let's do Fisher next.
Okay, yeah, this is just a continuance.
The other two would just continue.
Let's do one, I'm sorry, I should have. So 134 Fisher?
Yep.
All right. Jenny, do you want to just summarize what you gave us in the packet on this?
Yes, so we did, we had received those updated documents that I had talked to the board about at the last meeting. We did receive the comments from the Engineering Office and the Conservation Department, and there are still some things that need to be done per their comments, and those were sent over to the applicant. And then we are also waiting for a photometric plan and landscape plan. So that's what I.
When were the comments sent to the applicant?
They were sent maybe yesterday, so it has not been a long time, no.
Are we hoping to have draft conditions for the next meeting?
Yes, yeah, I, I did have them for this meeting, but then I, with the comments from the other departments, some things had changed, so I decided to wait until the next meeting.
Okay, so we may be able to close the public hearing. This is still open, right?
Not right now.
No, not today.
Yeah.
The next meeting.
I think by the next meeting, you should be able to. That would, that would be enough time for the applicant to review the comments and make the changes necessary.
Any questions from the board?
I'm not certain necessarily we'll have.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, Pete Byberry on behalf of the applicant. I'm not certain we'll have a revised plan and time for your staff to review it in response to you folks within two weeks. There's nothing significant, but our engineer right now is out of state, so I don't know when he's going to get to it. It may take us a week to get the plans. There's not a lot of revisions done that need to be done. There's some grading, there's some details on profiles and those type of things, but it wouldn't surprise me if it takes a week and then your staff probably needs a week to review it. So we'd really be cutting it short being back in two weeks. We're probably better off being back at.
Well, do you want to continue it to?
And just be aware, wait, just be aware that we only have one meeting on March 17th and we don't have another meeting till April.
Yeah, the 17th would be fine.
I believe it's the 19th, that's.
The 19th, whatever that is.
So that's okay, that's our next meeting.
Why don't we continue it to March 19th? We'll continue it to March 19th. And if you're not ready, just send us a note asking us to continue it again and we'll move, move it to the April 2nd.
Okay.
But for now, I don't want to move it to April 2nd.
Yeah, no.
And miss an opportunity to.
No, it'll give us some pressure and put on the engineer to get this thing started as well, so the month status fine.
Any further questions?
Was there anything you wanted to bring up?
No, I mean, we met with Concom. They had three questions. One, we are providing a temporary sedimentation basin and they ultimately just wanted a grading plan during the construction to make sure the flow was going to get there, no big deal. They raised the question as to the status of some past encroachment on the butter and that hasn't been done yet, but would be done as part of this project. And I forget what the third. In-site maintenance, which we explained to the board and we explained to them, this is one site. It's owned by Richard Records, so he'll be responsible for all the maintenance, drainage system, roadway, lighting, landscaping, everything, which would be better because we have one point of contact. And that was the only three questions they had. The engineering comments, I think the one kind of thing we have to revise is some grading around the detention basin to make sure there's a proper access there. We are looking at basements in the units, which would only be for storage, and we'll get to that revised plan. And the only other thing that kind of explanation was a comment from the town engineer in relation to, there was handicapped units for units one through 11 from a viewpoint of. in relation to, I think it was handicapped units for units one through eleven from a viewpoint of the house to the road. We're not providing individual, separate walkways from the front door to the street. What we're anticipating is people will park and the driveway itself would provide the access, which is a normal situation in the house. So you won't see, uh, separate independent walkways for each of the units and same way you don't necessarily see every house going from the house to the street. You get to the driveway and then you go from there. And that cuts down, as you would understand from you put them in pervious coverage and drainage and all those things. So there's nothing in the DPW comments that's of significant, but the engineer will need at least a week to revise the plans.
And I have one question, um, you said you're thinking about basements there? Would they be underground totally?
Uh, probably maybe a foot or maybe two macks exposed, they'll be sunk in. You will, it, there'll be a bulkhead out the back.
Okay, so that's how, yeah, so the access will be only outside?
Yes.
Not inside?
Right.
So there would be all access to basements from the inside of the house?
It would just be the storage.
Would they be more like crawl spaces or full height?
Full height, full height, but it's really just for.
Storage.
Sewer water, um, and some storage, so people aren't just leaving that stuff outside.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, only access from the outside.
Right, and get easier access to all the utilities.
Yeah, makes sense.
Did we ever come, that access, that, sorry, that currently is access across the town property? Have we come to a resolution on how that's going to get cleaned up?
I, I did talk to the DPW director about that and he doesn't need anything specific except to have it just cleaned up and restored to, um, you know, maybe some seed, a lemon seed or something there.
Okay.
Um, but nothing.
Which we agreed to.
Yeah, nothing really extraordinary.
I just want to make sure that that a, that access point is not.
Is that conditioned, conditioned?
That will be conditioned as part of the decision.
Okay. Uh, it is a public hearing, is there, I'm sorry, is there any, any further questions from the board? Anything else to do? It is a public hearing, seeing no one in the public. Uh, does somebody want a motion?
To continue? I move that we continue the, the hearing until March nineteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That's five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, now we can move on to one sixty-five Flanders.
So, um, one sixty-five Flanders, they requested another, um, continuance to, uh, March nineteenth and they, their, the time bond, the peer reviewer had responded with some comments on their, um, detention basin and, uh, so the engineer, um, what's his name? Andy Platt with Bowler, wanted, um, some more time to respond to that. So they've been in communication and they also, uh, continued the Conservation Commission meeting as well to March. So I don't even want to say, hopefully it will be done March nineteenth, but, um, conservation, the Conservation Director and I have both discussed this and, and we think it would be, uh, most likely the case that this can be voted on on March nineteenth because there's only a few little, uh, details, um, regarding the detention basin left.
I move the planning board continue the public hearing?
Oh, oh, you looked at me.
No, no. I bet you had a question.
Don't look at me.
Yeah, don't look.
Now look at him.
Sorry, it is a public hearing, so I have to acknowledge it.
Oh, there's no one here.
But I have to acknowledge that, so go ahead.
Good job, dude. Thanks. I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for one sixty-five Flanders Road until March nineteen, twenty-twenty-four, the meeting. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Uh, that's five to zero in favor of continuing that. Let's see, what else we have on our agenda?
MBTA.
Oh, the MBTA zoning article on town meeting warrant. We, uh, we had a pretty good presentation on this by Jenny, uh, last meeting. Hazel was not here, have you had a chance to watch the video, read the minutes?
I did have a chance to watch, I don't think we have the minutes. I had a chance to watch the video and I will say, John, your, um, comments were very good and I, I really appreciated what you had to say about it and the change you suggested to the presentation. Very well done.
Good job, Tom.
I love Sean.
Yeah.
Both Jones.
I second that.
And no, it was just, it was very helpful and I think that.
I can't remember what I said, if I said anything at all. Well, you can go back and watch the video.
I think it was John Gelsich I heard more.
Oh, good to say.
I just think we, um, it just clarified, it will clarify to the community, um, what we're talking about because a lot of us are getting questions on this and, but I think you made some good points.
Uh, do we have any further discussion on this or are we ready to move?
Uh, I just wanted to say one thing, um, since we had the select board meeting after that, um, initial meeting on this and, uh, I gave that presentation and, and you were there, Mark, to, uh, and help answer any questions from the select board. So they had good comments and I did tweak the presentation a little bit because I thought, um, John's comments were important as well, to make sure it's clear that, um, while this is over existing housing, we are working on other ways throughout town to make sure that we are providing housing options for, um, the residents of Westboro. Um, that this is not the only way that we can, uh, meet those housing needs. And, uh, I think that was very well received. I believe one member actually, uh, maybe with the Affordable Housing Trust, had a, a comment about that. And in a positive way, that they were happy to see that. And I did make one change, uh, because of a comment from a member and a, after rereading it, I did find that it was confusing. So originally, if you see in, in the purpose, it, it called, it's an acronym. It calls the MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District, the MCMOD. And then there were sub-districts that were the MF for multi-family. I think it was MF, MOD, and that was confusing. And that was, um, honestly from the state's template, but I since have changed it to just be MCMOD throughout. And I don't see any issue with just having one acronym. We have way too many acronyms.
Do you think we're going to get any questions about the, um, the Milton case?
Yeah. About what? Does it help us?
Was it Milton that just turned it down by vote?
Yeah, and they, and they just got sued today by EG.
Right, so I'm just wondering whether, you know, and I just think it's something, somebody might ask a question about that.
So, yeah.
I've just, I'm just telling, I'm just raising that.
I think that's an excellent point and, um, I think the other John raised a good point, um, at the, at the meeting about the presentation, making sure to drive home that we receive a lot of grant funding from all of those, um, entities with the state. Then if this doesn't pass and we don't comply, that would be a tremendous loss. We actually have active grants with complete streets, mass works, um, shared streets and spaces, mass trails and all of those would be affected if we do not, um, comply by December.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I would specifically say the funding will be pulled because that's what they did with Milton.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not that we won't get any more once we spend it, it's like, at this point, we are losing the money that we.
And that actually is a good point in the fact that, you know, this is what happens if you, if you don't pass it. You may be in a situation like Milton's in where they pulled, they actually pulled funding. You know, and I, I think that's, that is a point perhaps to make because people mostly have just seen the fact that Milton turned it down.
Yeah, I think it'd be beneficial though to, to put a dollar value on that in somewhere.
Yeah.
When you see Milton, they say, well, it was one point nine million and I guess the people of Milton don't think that's a lot of money. But I think we actually are getting a lot more right now than one point nine million.
Yeah, one point nine, I mean, one point nine million is nothing, but.
Well, not, nothing to, of wealthy town like Milton, but, uh, it's, uh, I think we're getting more than, yeah.
Well, for example, like the Otis Street project, um, that is a little over four million.
Yeah, it's right there, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good idea.
And that's just one project.
That's a good idea to put, I think putting an amount would be good to put in the presentation or, I mean, a comment about.
Approximation.
Approximation of what we're getting now.
Maybe the sources they're going to, so people kind of understand what they would be missing out, like the, where is that money go, being used? Right. Um, and then with Milton, did they, when they identified sites, were there actually sites that could be developed? Or was it kind of like what we're doing where it's not really?
Yeah, I'm not sure, John, I don't think they had, because they were rapid transit, they had a much, much higher number of units to agree. Um, so it, um, you know, I, I'm guessing that they were, were looking at rezoning areas that would.
See actual.
Would see substantial development.
Yeah, they, they do not have a lot of multi-family, they're mostly single-family communities. So for them to get multi-family would be a sort of new thing. Whereas Westboro, we have a lot of multi-family, so it's not necessarily a new concept for people.
I'm just saying like, they were actually going to be affected where, what we're proposing is not really going, going to affect the town other than if they don't vote for it, then we won't get grant and funding, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think you would have seen a lot of smaller, single-family homes in whatever district they were.
Yeah.
Proposing getting torn down for a building.
Unfortunately, there's always the misconception, um, that zoning means development. And we know that it doesn't, it's just zoning, it's just the rules for how you can develop. This isn't an approval of a project. And I think that's really important for people to understand, but when you see it turned down, it's usually because they don't understand. They see, you know, next year, a thousand units are going to be built all at once and it's just a, a fear that people have, I think. Hopefully we can get that point across the town meeting.
I'm sure these other articles are, have people's attention, other than this.
That's the understatement, right.
I have four kids, that's all I have to say.
All right, so, um, we do have to take action or, and, you know, is somebody ready to make a motion on that?
I move that the planning board recommend approval of, do you have an article number?
Um.
It's article.
I think it's article, I put it in at the top maybe, Article thirty-two.
Article thirty-two.
It's at the top of that page.
I'm, I'm going to restate my motion. I move that the planning board support the passage of Article thirty-two, amend zoning by law, zoning map, MBTA Communities Multi-Family Overlay District as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That is five to zero. Uh, any other business, reports of board members? Uh, director of planning updates?
Um, so we're working on the downtown development plan. Um, it's wrong agenda, sorry, I was trying to put the agenda back up, that was the wrong one. Um, we are still working on the downtown development plan. I have a meeting every two weeks with the consultant, uh, RKG Associates and so we should be, uh, getting the data for the existing conditions soon, um, within the next couple of weeks. And what we'll also be putting out is a scavenger hunt. So they are creating a scavenger hunt for, uh, residents or visitors, um, to go through downtown and it will be a story map, um, through ArcGIS that you can access on your phone and it will ask you questions throughout, will also have printable copies for anyone that wants one. And, um, they're essentially looking for people to find different landmarks and items throughout the downtown and then provide feedback at the end of it. Um, if you complete it, you can win a gift basket, which will have great items in it that I don't know if they are yet, but, um.
From downtown Westboro shops, I'm sure.
It is actually, yes. So Arkonom Development Coordinator is working on that. Uh, so I'm really excited about that project. Um, I'm also meeting with, um, a high school class there, they have a civics class, um, and that will be next week. Myself and the consultant will be going there and we have a map of downtown and we're going to talk to the students about what they see, um, as wants and needs in downtown are room for improvement. So I think that's really a positive thing. And, um, we should be having the community outreach or design charrette meetings sometime in April, when we have everything together. So once I have a date for that, of course, I'll share it. Also, you heard a little about the housing production plan. They will be interviewing stakeholders over the next couple of weeks and, um, so I might give them your information, um, in case they want to reach out and talk to you about housing needs, um, in Westboro and your experience or, um, et cetera, et cetera. So that is VHB, um, Luke Mitchell is the, uh, name of the consultant we're working with, with VHB. And, uh, so that's really, uh, moving along, they're also working on existing conditions. I also have an article, uh, at town meeting for the B-Wall easements. So as you know, when you go through the planning board, um, applications, if we have an opportunity for a B-Wall easement, you know, that's included as part of the plan. So we have fives that are listed for the B-Wall, um, for the town meeting to give, um, authorization for the select board to enter into an agreement, uh, for an easement for the B-Wall. And those are fifty-four and sixty-four Otis and sixty Otis, which is the, um, Amazon facilities. Sixty-six Otis, which is Cold Harbor, um, one-eighty Turnpike Road, which is Hyundai and then two-oh-eight Turnpike, which is Penta Properties.
So once those are settled, is there any other land that still needs to be, or easements still to be acquired to have a full path?
Yes, yes. Um, and so, um, Kristin and I have been working on a spreadsheet of sorts to help keep track of it. There was something before, but it, it had been updated in quite some time. And, um, as part of section two, which is the mass trails grant we received, um, for the design of section two, uh, we had to reach out to many property owners and, um, about just access to their properties. So during that design, we'll also be working on obtaining, um, those easement agreements. We just can't sign them until it goes to town meeting and town meeting gives select board authority. So we still have time to, uh, work out any details that we need to. And I think that's all I have, I'm sure there's a million other things, but.
So, uh, there is a meeting at seven tonight in this room on the Bowman, uh, Ellis Walker, uh, acquisition. If anybody wants to stay for that, I think I've given you plenty of information on that, uh, at past meetings, so. Anything else?
There's the CMRPC conference on, uh.
CTPC.
Oh, thank you, I've never been around those. I've run out of the issues. On the sixteen, which is the same day you have to be at the high school?
Oh, yes, that was the other thing, I forgot. Um, I hope I don't forget on that day, but John will remind me because he's helping me.
No, I won't, you got to remind me.
Um, but we have a table at the Community, um, Climate Action Fair. So, uh, we'll be talking about sustainability and, um, planning and zoning. And, but that is on the same day as the CPTC conference, which I highly encourage anybody to attend. I've gone many times and I feel like I always learn something new. Um, it's also a great networking opportunity. I think most of you have gone to one of them before.
We went.
It's at Holy, um, Holy Cross in Worcester.
Very good.
Um, but there's a lot of new sessions this year.
And the town pays for it?
Well.
Paid for it last year.
I think I finally get.
It is, we do have, we do have a budget for, um, conferences, so, yeah, we can be reimbursed.
So just, just as, uh, an FYI, there's been pushes in the planning community, um, legitimate pushes for the legislature to require training for boards and committees.
Yeah.
And CTPC would be the training.
Right, that would cover, that would comply.
It's actually, uh, uh, a lot of the grants, you get an extra point if the, if the board is, uh.
Right. Right, yeah, because we filled out stuff last year.
Yeah, if the majority of the board, so that's one of the reasons Hazel and I went, because John obviously has had training, but Hazel and I made a majority we got an extra point on the grant application.
Right, we had to fill out, I think the mass works.
Yeah, maybe.
It's, it's a great opportunity and they usually have a pretty good lunch and breakfast.
I think it was for our housing choice designation.
Yeah, I can't remember, it was something.
It's the designation. No, I think we are group communities, but it was another designation. All right, let's move on. I don't see any, do we have minutes?
I did not do the minutes, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, we can catch up on those in a future meeting.
Kristin should be back next week and as soon as she's back, maybe it won't be so crazy and you'll be back to your normal meeting, so, thank you for your patience.
Another problem. So actually, I can't send them, I'll wait and send them later.
Oh, yeah, I have the, these to sign, but I think we should wait for, is that what you mean? She gave me these.
Is that the one I waited for last week, the sixth?
Sorry.
I don't think that's actually business we need to.
Sorry, tomorrow.
So if anybody cares to motion on this, like.
I move that we adjourn, is that what you're looking for?
Second.
All right. Maybe.
Should I ask, should I ask the public?
No, but I did forget to ask the public on the MBTA.
I saw that.
Since there's no one here, I don't feel like it's a dangerous oversight, so I have a motion to adjourn and a second and discussion, all those in favor? That is five to zero in favor, have a great night, we'll see you on the nineteenth.
Unless you come to the Climate Action Fair.